At six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Hutt.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the warmer weather. God, we pray for safety for all of our students and teachers that are on spring break right now. And, Lord, we pray for tragedies that happen in our world. Tragedies that we hear about, tragedies that we don't hear about. We pray for the victims of all the tornadoes in Mississippi. And we also pray for all the victims of the school shooting in Tennessee. God, I ask a blessing on the families of every single council member. As we enter into the Easter season, may your blessings reign in their lives and in yours and in our city. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Hutt. Michael Fields, please take the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the metes from the meeting of March fourteenth? Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Organizational business. City Administrator.
Sorry, that's me.
He was on vacation, I forgot.
Try to get back in this swing, please. Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Allen Park. A few updates and projects going on here in the city of Allen Park. The following project funding requests were submitted to our elected state and federal representatives. We had a request that came in through their offices for projects. Try to put something together really, really quick as the timelines were short. For U.S. Representative Sri Tanadar, he's the thirteenth congressional district. We asked for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the paving of Allen Road from Southfield to Roseville. We've had some preliminary discussions with the DDA and Tom Murray from DPS on that project, probably looking at around two point one, two point two million, so it'd be about roughly one third. The second request went to State Senator Erica Geis. She's State Senate District Number One. Asked for five hundred thousand dollars for burying utility lines at the former Allen Park Theater property. Whether it becomes a redevelopment project or a open space, public space project, burying of the utility lines is going to be necessary no matter what to make the facility, the land usable for redevelopment. Also asked Senators Erica Geis for one million eighty thousand dollars and some change for paving of the Champagne Park parking lot. That's a necessary project that I know the Parks and Recreation has been, Commission's been asking about. So we put that together and asked them for that if she can help us with some funding on that project. Two projects that are getting ready to start here, we're, it's obviously the springtime here and it is, it's going to be ready to go. I think we had in the article in the, in the Allen Park Today magazine, which everybody should have received, talking about the, the construction cones turning into the estate flower and they're going to be blooming, they're going to be blooming a lot this year, so here in Allen Park. For the water main replacement project, the contractor for that is Britco Excavating. Familiar name, we've used them in the past in a couple of different projects. They're planning to start the Paris Avenue project, that's Allen Road to the dead end just east of Lawrence Avenue in the north end. They're going to start that project next week. Rosedale Project, this is going to be the big one here, one of the, one of the two big ones. The contractor for that is going to be Hard Rock Concrete. They're starting to mobilize their equipment over the next two weeks and they're planning to start concrete removal on Monday, April tenth. That's going to require shutdown of Rosedale. Not too sure where it's going to be from and various, or how long, but it's going to, it's definitely going to be detours to get around that area. Concrete sectioning utilities, that contractor is Savone Cement. They're planning to start their utility repairs after the Easter holiday. I'm going to guess probably that week of April tenth as well. Hopefully the weather, and all this is weather permitting, so tentatively weather permitting. Some good news here is this has affected a lot of the neighborhood. This year, we had it affect the neighborhoods in the last couple of years with ET, but they started their concrete replacement portion of their meter replacement program. So we've had a number of houses that have had new meters removed, put to the outside. In those cases, they've had to maybe take up the concrete in front of the house, so they are replacing that as we go along. You know, Steve Wood from the building, DPS Coordinator, he's, he's working with them on that project. At the Thursday's DDA meeting, the DDA approved the following alleys to be paved in 2023. This is going to be the Champagne Road to Belmont Avenue. This is behind the Champagne Alley Boutique, right there across the street from the library. Meyer Avenue to Dashar Avenue. This is the off of Allen Road, north side of, of Southfield. It's going to be behind the Elks Cleaners Parking Lot. And then they're also going to be doing Dashar Avenue to Horger Avenue. That's going to be behind the actual Alexander's Cleaners, also on the north end. So two in the north end, consecutive sections there will be helped to hopefully help maintain some cost on that. And then the one there in the South Allen section of the DDA district. I'm going to also later, after I'm done here, I'm going to have Chief, he can come up and discuss this one a little bit more. But the Allen Park Police Department launched the Power Engage Program today, which will gather feedback from individuals that interact with the police department. Again, I'll have Chief Egan come up and talk about that in a second. The installation of the new LED lights at the ice arena has started. That's a, that's, that's brightening, it's brightening. I can't do better. I need a dad joke on that one. I apologize. This is going to be much brighter inside, though. The old play equipment at Gingerbread Totlot has been removed. This is a, and the new equipment has arrived. Gingerbread Totlot is on the north end, Morris and Harlow, thereabouts? Between Lawrence and, and Wall, is it Wall at that point? So on the far northeast corner of the city. That's going to get a brand-new play equipment. Also going to be doing the, the safety surface that we've been doing at the parks that we've done at Humpty Dumpty. We've done at Kennedy, we've done at Briar Rabbit. This will be our fourth one with that safety material. And they're, they're scheduling the installation date through Parks and Recreation Department to be shortly. I know there's going to be some concrete work that needs to be done first, but getting the play equipment out. And I know Kyle and, and Rob made sure Simon to notify the residents of what was going on. I think we got some pretty good feedback on that, too, that they were very happy to see, see some improvements on that park, so. Amanda Words, Finance Secretary, will be meeting with the department heads later this week to go over the proposed budgets from their department. I, I think they're all happily looking forward to that event with her. City Hall be closed Friday, April seventh, for Good Friday. I thought there was another holiday, April sixth, which is opening day. I don't see that on here, so I think we're just close the one day in that opening day. And then the founding employee, Richard Myleson, with the city in years of service, and that's going to be Richard Hamilton from the Fire Department, fifteen years of service on the thirty-first of March. And if you don't mind, I'd like to yield a little bit of time here to Chief Egan just to kind of give an update on that Power Engage program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you remember, you approved, we purchased a program called Power DMS a few years ago that's been very helpful getting us organized with our policies. Matter of fact, we just updated five today and both put union contracts on there. This is a program through that company called Power Engage that monitors our runs that we go out on. And a very simple text message goes to those customers that we deal with. Ask them a couple of quick questions, take only seconds to say, how was your service? What did you think about this? And then there's points where they can do comments back to us. So in our lobby and then also in our squad room, our officers will see the feedback. So today, just three of them that we got was super professional, nice and respectful. Officers were very calm and collected and helped us with our situation, no worries. It has been since last summer now that I was in an accident with a very irate person and the cop was so kind to me and, as I cried because it was my first accident, and they kept the other person away until they calmed down. So we are not under any illusions that we're only going to get positive feedback. We know that we don't always make everybody happy, especially when we're trying to handle both sides of situations. But not only is it, I think, important for officers to get the good positive feedback, part of accreditation is they have early warning signs. So if we end up hiring an officer five years from now that's doing things inappropriate, we want to know about it and get them out of our department. So our officers want to work with good people, too. So I think it's going to be very helpful. So when you're in our lobby, it'll be on there. And when our officers are doing reports or at roll call, they'll be able to see their names come up. And I think that good behavior encourages other good behavior. So our detective bureau will be able to use that to say, you know, Detective Sergeant Fatilia is on your case, and he can text back, hey, I'm still waiting on those records for, for whatnot, or hey, your case has been closed, we made an arrest. So I think the communication factor is going to go through the roof with us. So we're one of the very first cities in the state to kind of pilot this program. So if nobody wants to be text, we don't do it at night from eight till eight in the morning and things like that. They can just type stop, just like anything else you get, and they'll be taken off the list and things like that. But I think most people want to be informed of what's going on with their case and give feedback to us. So I think it's going to be really positive, so. We did. So Detective Sergeant Eli Fatilia is our coordinator for our Come Back Quick team. So Families Against Narcotics came today and they gave the whole team an appreciation award, had all their staff for 2022. They actually went out today and got another family in treatment. So they're doing phenomenal work. We arrested somebody yesterday who had narcotics on him. So we're not afraid to do that. If you come into our city and you're selling drugs or you're bringing that poison in our city, we will arrest you. However, the other side of that coin is there is an addiction component to it that we want to work with these people. And so far, they've gotten over fifty people since we started this into treatment. So that's a lot of people that aren't breaking into cars anymore, that are being good citizens in our community. And the ones that don't are tending to leave our city and going elsewhere. So we want to, you know, have a holistic approach and attack this at every way we can. And so far, they're doing a phenomenal job. And Sergeant Fatilia got recognized for that, for his team. Anything else?
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
I think that speaks very well to the direction we're heading in. It just puts a very positive light on, on police and what, and the work that you do.
That's important in this day and age. I think we got to be transparent. We have to work with our community partners, and this is just another way. And we want to know when we don't do things right, when we could do things better. I think there's always ways to tweak things. And our, our officers are going to see that. They're going to see that we're doing it for the right reasons, too. So it's a good partnership.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blevins. Any comments or questions? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. Residents may come up and speak for four minutes. All we want is your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your exact address. This is not a Q and A period, but you may come up and feel free to comment. Public comment is open.
Evening, Council. Terry Chaney, I live on Paris Avenue, and you already addressed, one of my questions is when are they going to start the street repair? I'd like to follow up with that. A lot of the neighbors are asking, what are we going to do with parking? And how is the access going to be while the construction's going on as far as getting in and out of our driveways and that sort of thing? There's a lot of concerns. The neighborhood has got some elderly folks in it that are not really able to walk any distances. They're concerned about the access and the parking, for sure. They're concerned also about parking their cars where they may be broken into. And I'm wondering if anyone's looking at that as a possible situation where some extra eyes could be in the neighborhood at that time as well. Second question I had for you was regarding trees. I have a tree that's on the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the street, and I'd like to have it removed. And I was wondering who within the city to contact regarding that? Pardon me, sir?
If you can see Mr. Murray at the back of the auditorium.
Tom Murray?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He'll be able to hopefully answer all those questions for you.
Is there anyone else wishing to come up during the public comment period?
Hi. Hi, Mayor. Esteemed Council, I'm Andrea Robinson. I am a district rep for State Senator Sylvia Santana. I just wanted to introduce myself. We don't have a large part of Allen Park, but we do have several precincts. And just to let you know that we're here for you, we will be dropping off materials at the library so that people know that we're out here. And I think she has just arrived, so I'll probably sit down.
Oh. I just didn't know what your protocol was, so I didn't.
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, you're welcome to come right up.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm State Senator Sylvia Santana, representing the second district for the state of Michigan in the Michigan Senate, which only encompasses one precinct with about two hundred households within the Allen Park area, which is north of ninety-four. So it is an honor to be with you here this evening. I will just say that some of you I've had, have tried to reach out to just to kind of meet your acquaintance, but definitely I know during campaign season, that's kind of difficult to build that relationship going through the process. But it is an honor to be here as my legislative liaison has mentioned, yes, we are here for you. In the area we represent, more importantly, just across Allen Park and throughout the state of Michigan. So if there's anything that our office can support, we're here for you in that manner. I have talked to several of the residents within the area I do represent. Not necessarily the business district, but definitely if there's anything, our office is available. Like I said, we just encompass the one area of Allen Park, but definitely we want to make sure that those individuals are represented. So thank you all so much for all the hard work you do here on the ground as the city council and at the local level to help support our entire state. So thank you.
Thank you. If there is no one coming forward, I will close public comments and we will move on to the consent agenda, which tonight is purchasing actions and two licenses and permits, one for the AIPAC Annual Parade and one for the sale of Tootsie Rolls by the Knights of Columbus. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We have a resolution that the mayor and council authorize the signing of the settlement documents related to the national opioid settlement. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Marcos. You'll get explanation.
Good evening, again. This request here is to sign the documents in regards to the Teva Allegrin, or, sorry, Teva Allegrin CVS Walmart Walgreens lawsuit settlement. This is through the, at the national level, being also handled through the state of Michigan on this opioid. I'm going to call it, I guess, I'm not too sure where pandemic, but basically this, it's a, it's, we got a, we got a problem, we got a major problem here. So this is a settlement. The city will be able to gain funds that we'll be able to turn back in and help either the various programs. We're, we're working with the attorney's office to find out what those programs may be eligible for. Possibilities, it could be the program the chief just mentioned, Come Back Quick program may be one of those. We're, we're just trying to find that out right now. So we need to have the council approve us to go ahead and move forth. This is the second settlement. The first one was done in December of twenty-one. That involved Jansen and the distributors. And I, again, I apologize, which, who was involved in the distributors. It's a couple of different companies that the, that the federal government had gone after. I believe there may be a third one out there, as we have not had any settlement at this point in time with writing yet, and that is when it's still lingering out there, is my understanding. So we could be back for a third time. I believe so far, we've received on the distribution one, or settlement one, was around twenty-seven thousand dollars. And again, we're working with the attorney's office of Joe, Randy, and Alyssa to find out what eligible expenses can be incurred for those, that program.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is carried. And we come to other business. And tonight, we have the third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number one. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Any questions or comments? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have a motion for the public? I'm sorry, I got to read.
You were just making sure I was paying attention. I appreciate that. All right. Third reading by title only of proposed ordinance oh one dash two zero two three, an ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, Amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Two in General by the addition of Section two dash one, City Seal, to codify and define permitted uses of the city seal.
Thank you. Now we will open for a public hearing on this ordinance. Since no one is coming up, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to the adoption. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number one dash twenty-two-three?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
All right, Madam Mayor, I have a motion by Councilman Schleck, supported by Councilman Valerius. And it is, shall, I'll read that later, but for ordinance number one dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, Amending Chapter Two Administration, Article One in General, by the addition of Section two dash one, City Seal, to codify and define permitted uses of the seal, shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses have it. The ordinance is successful and will be published in a manner prescribed by law. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to a motion for the third reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance number two dash twenty-two-three.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Have the third reading, please. I'm sorry. Vote first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Third reading by title only of proposed ordinance oh three dash two zero two three, an ordinance of the city of Allen Park, Code of Ordinances, Amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Six Finance, Division Four, Conveyance or Leases of Land of the City, to authorize the sale of the vacant parcel of land located on Rosedale Boulevard, identified as tax ID three zero dash oh one five dash oh three dash oh three six five dash zero zero zero.
Thank you. And now we will open a public comments, public hearing on this.
Hi, good evening. Tracy Fresh, I live on Hanford Avenue. Just curious, I was trying to look in the notes, is there a price determined for this? Or is this a vote that is going to then start that process going? I just didn't see it looking at the, the notes from previous meetings.
Right, so this, this ordinance is, it authorizes the mayor and city administrator to sell this property.
To enter into. And does that?
Into an agreement. And in the past, vacant lots have been sold for a thousand dollars.
Okay. And is there a way that that's documented then in the future, what it went, we actually sold for, just through the, through the city?
Well, it definitely would be. There will be a purchase agreement.
Okay, that will come to the council?
A, a written purchase agreement, which will be on record, which the mayor will sign, and there will also be a deed which evidences that.
Okay. And that, will that come back in a, through a packet here, or you'd have to go to the city offices to get that number?
It will not come before council again.
Perfect, thank you very much.
There's no further public coming up. We will close the public hearing. I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number two dash twenty-two-three.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Second by Mr. Lally. Roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a motion by Councilman Marcos and supported by Pro Tem Lally for ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Six Finance, Division Four, Conveyances or Leases of Lands of the City, to authorize the sale of vacant parcel of land located on Rosedale Boulevard, identified as tax ID three zero dash zero one five dash zero three dash zero three six five dash zero zero zero. Shall this ordinance pass? Pro Tem Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
And Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
The yeses have it. The ordinance does pass and will be published in a manner prescribed by law. Thank you, Mayor and Council, again.
Thank you. Before we get into council comments, I want to remind council, and I will also send out an email, that next Tuesday, April fourth, we have a study session, which starts at six PM and will be held at the DPS facility. So we will be on site because the DPS will be the topic of the evening. And now we will start with council comments. And tonight, Mr. Marcos is our leadoff batter in keeping with the upcoming opening day.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming, thank for your comments, thanks for your questions. Appreciate it very much. I wish more people would come and ask questions. I, we really like it. It's good to have informed citizens here. Don't have a whole lot to say tonight. Don't want to get into anything too deep, so I'm going to keep it very light. And my tidbit for the day is it's National Something on a Stick Day, and it's Respect Your Cat Day, so have some, have a, have a corn dog and pet your cat. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Marcos. Mr. Lally?
Good evening. First of all, I want to apologize for last week when the police officers got a promotion from sergeant to lieutenant. I really apologize. If I say something different, I'm sorry about that. I want to congratulate them again. They will be a good asset for this, to Allen Park citizens. I belong, I go to as a liaison to the SUDS, which means Stop Underage Drinking and Drugs. I got this letter in the mail, and alcohol in Michigan. Alcohol is the most used substance by youth and adults in the United States. Fifty-five percent, fifty-five point three percent of high school seniors use alcohol in the past year, monitoring the future survey of 2020. Two point five seven percent of the people in Michigan who die from excessive alcohol use are under age of twenty-one, just thinking about that. In 2020, nineteen percent, nineteen point six percent of high school students, three point zero two millions, four point seven percent of middle school students, five hundred fifty thousand, reported current cigarette uses. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, where it's come from. About ninety-five percent of adult smokers begin smoking before the age of twenty-one, and about eighty percent start before the age of eighteen. Four out of five become regular, daily smokers, before they turn twenty-one. So encourage your kids and encourage your students not to smoke and not to drink. Very bad for you. The way you could have people living instead of dying. On a better note here, we have a state cookout coming up. On a better note here, uh, we have a steak cookout coming up at the Knights of Columbus tomorrow night. It's our first steak cookout of the year. You get a nice juicy steak for sixteen ounce, sixteen ounce sirloin steak, New York. New York street, I'm sorry. And, uh, you're welcome to come. It's fifteen dollars. You get a salad, salad and, and, uh, baked potatoes and dessert, of course. So you're welcome to come. And another one we're having, of course, you heard, we approved the Tootsie Roll Drive this weekend. So I heard you guys. Be careful, those guys, that's, that's collecting money for the Tootsie Roll for the, our special, God's special children. We do this every year. Uh, the, the mustachore dinner will be on the twenty-second of April. And it will be from five to eight, three to eight, I'm sorry, three, after church, three PM to eight PM. The dinner costs five, ten dollars for the adults and five dollars for children. And we have a Chinese rep and fifty-fifty. So you're welcome to come. It's open to the public. And we appreciate your offering, your service to come there. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
Uh, I would also like to thank everybody that, um, got up and spoke today. Um, echo, uh, Mr. Marcos's comments, um, that being involved is very important. I would like to extend a special thank you to Senator Santana. Thank you so much for taking the time out this evening and coming and visiting us today. And, um, also for your hard work in Lansing. Some exciting things going on, um, right now. And so very much appreciate you, uh, representing, um, although a small pocket of it, the, the people of Allen Park's interests in Lansing. So very much appreciate it. Um, so keeping it short tonight, um, last thing I'll add here is, I was just thinking, um, I miss Councilman Valerius's poems. Um, if we could get one next time around, I'd really appreciate it. Just a little special request. And after that, I yield.
Valerius.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have one prepared tonight, so I apologize. Uh, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Richard Hamilton, uh, from the Allen Park Fire Department. Fifteen years of service to the city of Allen Park. Uh, also like to thank, uh, attended Parks and Rec meeting, uh, yesterday evening. Like to thank Rob, Kyle, and Evan, uh, and all the Parks and Rec employees for all the great things that you're doing, not only in the community center, the ICE arena, but this is their time of the year where they get extremely busy in preparation for all the spring activities, uh, throughout the, the city with all the parks, uh, the ballfields and, uh, everything else. So, uh, also like to thank, uh, all members of DPS, the police and fire departments. You know, we had the, another windstorm that came through the city. Uh, you know, I know they were dealing with a lot of branches and trees and, uh, increase in, uh, calls. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, all they do each and every day. Not just during windstorms, but especially during windstorms. On another note, just, uh, with the warm weather moving in, and this kind of goes back to, you know, what we kind of discussed a little bit, uh, you know, during our work session. Uh, you know, when I go for my daily walk, uh, you know, I like to get in the habit of just taking a, a little trash bag with me and just pick up the stuff along my route. You know, I encourage everyone to do that. Uh, you know, it doesn't take a lot of time or energy to just pick up trash that you see as you're walking by it anyway. Uh, you know, I think it's something very easy to do. And I believe, you know, that in a way, we're all kind of responsible for keeping our city beautiful. And if that is just one little thing that you could do, uh, imagine if everyone who goes for walks throughout the city does that. I'm sure you definitely would notice a difference, uh, throughout the neighborhoods. Uh, and since we will not be officially meeting, uh, before April sixth, uh, I want to say happy birthday to my son, who will celebrate his twenty-third birthday on that day. Uh, and with that, thank you everyone for coming out. Appreciate your time. And I yield.
Thank you. Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start by saying I want to wish everyone a very happy Easter and Passover because that will happen before we meet next. Special echo our city administrator that I do believe that opening day of Tigers also should be a holiday. Also want to echo the statement I passed her today about the gun violence that we've heard in Tennessee. I've said it before and I'll say it again. It needs to end. Uh, if you ever have an issue that's important to you, don't feel free, or definitely feel free to bring it up. If it's important to you, it's important to me. And I want to keep on hearing these ideas. Keep them coming. And finally, I want to, uh, extend a congratulations to the mock trial team, the Allen Park Jags team. That's something I wished my high school had. Uh, I was on student council, but I was not, uh, involved with any sort of thing like mock trial, but I certainly would have been involved if I could have. Uh, and finally, thank you Senator Santana for a grace in our presence. And any elected official that wants to grace our presence that serves our great community, I welcome open conversation. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins, please.
So, the other day. So the other day, I was at the Glass Onion, again, support your local businesses, and was watching March Madness. And one of the commercials was the show Survivor. And so some, one of the waitresses was like, this show is so odd. And I'm like, well, it's still surviving.
There's our natural.
You're welcome. Um, first off, I just want to say, I was reading into that the Household Hazards Waste Day, first one in Wayne County is on April first. I'm at the, uh, Wayne County Community College on Hagerty Road in Belleville. Also, I want to say, uh, good job to our police department, uh, especially in this last, um, this last month with St. Patrick's Day. I saw they were very busy on Southfield and, um, and then with the flock cameras that we have, they, again, investing in that stuff, that it, it will, it makes a difference. And again, all the stories I see and hear, it's, again, a great job to our police department in what they do. Great job to our high school drama club with their musical, Chicago. Went to go see it. Talented students and, again, using that Center for the Arts, always great. Thank you to our, uh, part-timers in our city. I know that, like, they don't really get as recognized, but I just want to say that everyone in our city does a fantastic job, especially our part-timers. As at our work sessions meeting, I just talked about our lovely flags in front of City Hall and wanting them to be lit. And until I see it, when I get drive to work on midnights, I'm gonna keep on asking, when is it gonna get done? And I hope tonight it will be shining. Lastly, um, I hope everyone has a wonderful Easter. Also, April second, um, is World Autism, uh, Day. So please, uh, please recognize that by either wearing blue or putting, uh, like, the light at your porch blue. And then with that, I wanted to say, stay positive, God bless, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night.
Thank you. First of all, I very much appreciate, uh, Senator Santana, uh, coming into City Hall. It's very nice to see someone here in person. And, um, hopefully, uh, we have some contact information because even though you may only represent a, a small part, I'm a firm believer in, in the people who represent us working together as a team. And, uh, every voice, uh, is a, a big help to us. So no matter the size of the population you represent, uh, we, we very much appreciate your, your, uh, working on our behalf. Speaking of cleaning up, I just want to remind people, if you don't have it on your calendar, that Saturday, April twenty-second, the Beautification Commission is having their Beautification Cleanup Day at ten AM. They will announce, um, gathering location. And, um, it's a, it's a great way to meet, uh, some of your fellow residents and, and get out there and kind of give a boost to the city. And if the weather is really nice, you get a lot of nice fresh air and exercise, and I guarantee you will sleep well that night. Other than that, I don't have too much to say. I was sitting, um, waiting to go into an appointment yesterday when the TV came on with, um, news, like, once again, of another, uh, school shooting. And, um, I cried. Um, and I'm really getting tired of crying. And I certainly hope that people, uh, can be objective and use a little common sense. We don't need to take away anyone's rights, but we need to be a little more aware of mental health and things that are impacting individuals and what's going on around us. You're never going to eliminate it. You're never going to eliminate that drunk driver who unfortunately doesn't seem to stop until they kill someone. It's never going to eliminate it. But we sure as heck ought to try to do something in this country to reduce it. Because if you look at worldwide data, it's deplorable. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Supported by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned at six forty-one. Thank you all.